We are in a study session. And for those who don't know, the rules are a little different in a study session. People may talk about items on the agenda for three minutes each. And you may share time, so you may give your time to somebody else if you're so inclined to do so. But you get three minutes on items on the agenda. And one other thing is, we don't do any official business here in a study session. So if we do anything at all, we're going to ask for a consensus of councilors, usually to instruct staff to do something or other. So I think we're ready for the first item, the bulk plane regulations. Oh, yeah, citizens' comments first. Does anybody -- oh, he's getting the -- I see one person who is very likely to give a comment. Okay, Lynn Craig.
I have a minute because I'm not sure how.
Go to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Let me just tell everybody, if you would like to come to the microphone, please say your name and your first and last name, spell your last name, give your home address, and be sure to speak close to the microphone.
Okay, my name is Lynn Craig, that's C-R-A-I-G. I live at 3675 Marshall Street. And I would like to address Agenda Number One, the bulk plane regulation. I remember that recently I completed the survey, and I read in the Neighborhood Gazette that the majority of residents responding to the survey approved of a bulk plane regulation, I believe it was 15 feet. And I am here to be sure that you know that we still want that done, and I hope that you will support that. Thank you very much.
Jess Garcia. And Sandy Nance is after that.
Yes, thank you for having me. And my name is Jesse Garcia, G-A-R-C-I-A. I live at 3660 Marshall Street, neighbors of Lynn. And I too appreciate that you are listening tonight to our comments. And I do approve of the 15-foot bulk plane that you had on the survey. And I agree with the rest of the members that had agreed on that same survey. Thank you.
Dorothy Archer is next.
My name is Sandy Nance, N-A-N-C-E, 4097 Field Drive. I came to comment on the bulk plane regulations, knowing that my neighbors were here last week speaking against a subdivision of a lot. My reason -- you know, I understand that the city must let people do what their legal rights are, they have a legal right, as long as it's within code. I do know that a three-story slot house stuck in a lawn of ranch homes with beautiful landscaping is kind of a sacrilege. I don't know if this bulk plane regulations will save our beautiful neighborhood, whether they affect -- basically what they've done is make a very small lot, and they're putting a very large house on it. I came to find out whether or not these bulk plane regulations would help. I do want to say that I think that the west side of Wheat Ridge has an interest in supporting the bulk plane regulations. That so far, people have been only talking about the east side of Wheat Ridge. But I think the west side of Wheat Ridge, given this subdivision and sticking a slot home, has issues. I mean, I think we would benefit from having the citywide bulk plane regulations. Thank you.
After Dorothy is Michael Epsom.
My name is Dorothy Archer, A-R-C-H-E-R, 3640 Marshall Street. Thank you, Council, for taking the 15-foot bulk plane and addressing it in the study session this evening. Again, I reiterate how important it is that we recognize the fact that the majority of people on your survey supported the bulk plane. We are extremely concerned about preserving the character of Wheat Ridge. I emphasize again, we are still the most sought-after city in real estate right now. And what are they after? Ranch-style homes. The bulk plane will preserve privacy, and will be staying, hoping to stay, in the character. Thank you.
Michael, it's Rachel.
Haltine. My name -- excuse me, my name is Michael Epsom, E-P-S-O-N, 2905 Chase Street. The council's heard my speech on bulk plane so many times when we got it passed in the R-1C. You've probably got it memorized as well as I do. We believe this is applicable to everything in the city of Wheat Ridge. It preserves neighborhood continuity, it preserves privacy, and it preserves the value of homes that are surrounding these larger homes. So I'm in favor of the bulk plane throughout the city of Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
After Rachel is Kim Calamino.
Good evening, my name's Rachel Haltine, and I'm here to speak on both Agenda Item One and Three. On Agenda Item One, a couple of thoughts I have regarding the bulk plane. I think council did a great job a couple years ago when they initiated looking at the impacts of bulk plane on the R-1C zones. Two thoughts I have on the impact of taking a piece of zoning and looking at it through just this exclusive lens of one element of zoning. Two things. One is, the city's in the first third of a year-long update to its neighborhood revitalization strategy. That's a significant policy piece that really looks at, what do we need to do with our neighborhoods to ensure that Wheat Ridge continues to be a desirable place for strong households in the next year and in the next 10 years? By May, the committee of 26 people will be bringing forth a policy that will be developed through a series of conversations with community members across the city. The result of that may be recommendations for a comprehensive overhaul of the zoning, or really focusing on areas where we want to be preserving some elements of the city and investing in change in others. And I think at this point, in the middle of that process, to make a significant change to our zoning code could be really disruptive to that process. And I think we'll know more in May, and maybe that's the better time to pick this up. The second thing is, our city is literally a rainbow of zoning codes. And those zoning codes allow us to really enhance and retain the unique character and quality of the different neighborhoods in our city. And I understand the pressures that east Wheat Ridge is getting with its development. And I think the city, again, did the right thing by looking at that and coming up ways to preserve some of the quality of life for the residents who are living on the smaller lots there. I'm really concerned that adopting this across the city would create unintended consequences. We have a spectrum of existing uses, especially west of Wadsworth. We have some larger agricultural land uses, and I'm afraid that the setbacks could create issues for existing homeowners. And then my last thought on that is, you know, when we hope that Wheat Ridge is a place where families will stay as their families change, whether they're growing or getting smaller, a lot of times that requires changing their homes. And the more restrictive we are on those changes, the more likely we are to lose existing residents, and the more likely we are to have a hard time attracting strong new residents. And then my quick comment on Item Number Three regarding appointing positions, should we have successful elections to greater office on council and treasurer, is it's effectively a 10-month appointment. And I really hope that we get strong applicants, and that council will really consider people who have demonstrated professional and service skills in policy and complicated items. The 10 months that that person will be serving, they will be dealing with very complicated infill and policy items. And their ability to step in and do that without the typical onboarding that a normal elected official would get for a four-year term is critical for the success of that 10-year appointment. Thank you. Or 10-month appointment, God, 10 years, can you imagine?
After Rachel is Steve Singer.
Good evening, Kim Calamino, 4070 Dover Street. I'm speaking to the bulk plane discussion you'll have tonight. Neither of the conducted surveys presented compelling support for citywide bulk plane adoption. Our regulations are already confusing enough with heightened density in the charter, as well as the zoning code, conflict that bears resolution in a studied and careful process. The city's in the middle of the NRS update, which is examining policy recommendations to attract stronghold households and boost economic development. As part of that process, the steering committee is engaging residents in meaningful discussions about what needs to change and what needs to stay the same, for Wheat Ridge as a desirable place to live, run a business, spend money, and learn. Changing one aspect of the land use and development now will interfere with that process and might create confusion and obstacles for the NRS community to recommend in 2019. There is a reason our city has a literal rainbow of zoning, as Rachel referenced. It allows zoning to regulate the sub-areas, which have unique qualities and characteristics. By adopting a one-size-fits-all zoning regulation for residential zone districts, the city loses its ability to retain or promote change in character in the distinctly different neighborhoods that give our city its character. I ask you to consider, why change something that isn't broken, and particularly prior to the completion of the NRS update? Thank you.
Steve Singer, S-I-N-G-E-R is the last name, 9810 West 36th Avenue, Wheat Ridge. I just want to say that I'm in favor of the bulk plane regulations, you know, citywide. And, you know, in my neighborhood, which sits on a hill, you know, back when they built the houses, the roofs are all at a different pitch, and I think it's because the folks that built that neighborhood were concerned about, you know, the view being obstructed. And I realize that's not something that can be adopted citywide, but at least someone was thinking at the time. And I just think we ought to think about, you know, people's quality of life and people's potential views, and I would like to just be in favor of the bulk plane restriction. Thank you.
Are you going to speak on number two? Just -- excuse me, you were signed up for one and two, I thought. Okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
I'm good.
Katie Hoffman, 3385 Chase Street. I'm here in favor of the bulk plane restrictions, and mostly to learn about what my neighbors think. I've been alarmed at seeing the big slot boxes go up in my neighborhood, so, thank you.
Frank Harbor. And after that is Mary Margaret Coats.
Frank Harbor, H-A-R-B-O-U-R, I live at 3385 Chase. And my views are similar to my wife Katie's, that there are far too many of these giant houses going into smaller lots and pretty much changing the entire character of our neighborhoods. And so that's why I support the setback. Thank you.
After Mary Margaret is Margaret Nelson.
My name is -- excuse -- my name is Mary Margaret Coats, 9835 West 35th Avenue in Wheat Ridge. I just wanted to point out once again that the only thing they're not making any more of is land, particularly land that the city of Wheat Ridge was able to buy specifically for park purposes. My neighbors and I oppose relinquishing any of the park land at 38th and Kipling in the Discovery Park. Thank you.
Margaret Nelson, okay. And after that is Susanna Coats.
Margaret Nelson, 9865 West 37th Avenue, it's N-E-L-S-O-N. In terms of the bulk plane, I'm in favor of that. I'm really in favor of the city reducing the allowable height limit to like 30 feet, but I know that's not going to happen. A bulk plane would at least minimize the impact of the overly tall buildings that are currently being allowed. And in terms of Item Two, I'm not opposed to all development. I do hope the city will retain maintenance of the drainage that goes through that property that you're going to get rid of, and make sure that that continues to be a good drainage for all of our sakes.
And after Susanna is Joseph Goroski.
My name is Susanna Coats, C-O-A-T-E-S, 9835 West 35th Avenue. And I actually came and spoke at city council on the night when it was decided to section off that plat next to 38th from the park and turn it into vacant lot instead of a park. I was strongly opposed to that, and I'm still opposed to it. It was bought as a park, the Inerson property was purchased with Parks and Rec. There's plenty of places for commercial development, and more of that land we can preserve. I live right next to the park that has been built, and it's delightful, it's lovely. It's not without its problems, but it's fantastic to see the community activity that takes place. And depriving ourselves of space for that type of community activity seems like a poor decision when it's not necessary.
After this is Michelle Carter.
Hi. I'm Joseph Gronski, G-R-O-N-S-K-I, not Goroski, 10545 West 36 Place. I'm in favor of the 15-foot bulk plane. You know, if I put my house, almost everybody in my area and on my street have ranch homes, there may be a two-story house with a pitched roof, but it's fairly low. If I put my house up, say 30, 35 feet, tore off the roof and increased it, you know, I could look into every single neighbor's house, they'd have no privacy. Same with any of my neighbors, they put up a giant house right next to mine, and I wouldn't have any privacy anymore. Our street, people like the privacy. They like that they can look at the mountains or the sky or something instead of being sun-blocked by these used houses right next to us. It's been that way since the '60s. I really don't want to see it changing. Thank you.
Michelle Carter, okay. And after that is Catherine Hartzell.
It's actually Nicole Carter, and I'm at 2922 Dip Hugh. And I'm speaking on Agenda Item Number One. As a Wheat Ridge resident, I'm frustrated that this topic is yet again on the docket, all while the city is actively investing a substantial amount of money and time into updating the neighborhood revitalization strategy. This process is being led by a national consultant and includes feedback from over two dozen volunteer residents. Collectively, these residents have worked tirelessly to identify the true concerns and priorities of a much broader demographic by hosting countless small group sessions. These open forums have brought together residents, businesses, and even visitors of Wheat Ridge. Uh-oh, lost my place, sorry. Even visitors of Wheat Ridge, and encourage them to provide their input on what items they believe should be improved upon, so that we can ensure our city continues to thrive and grow long into the future. As a participant and a spectator at a couple of these small group meetings, I can assure members of council and city staff that this urgent and overwhelming need to once again have a discussion regarding increased bulk plane regulations, and the desire to apply them throughout the rest of the city, is not a reoccurring theme during these topics or during these meetings. In fact, if it is brought up, it typically is paired with items such as a strong desire to have property maintenance codes updated, and for stronger enforcement, and/or a desire to create ADU building code standards, so that property owners can build mother-in-law suites within the letter of the law. I truly believe that if, that having council even consider adding additional regulations, adding additional districts, or even worse, placing a moratorium on issuing additional permits with the current already greatly amended regulation, would be absolutely detrimental to our city's growth, and it would be completely irresponsible on the part of our elected leaders. Based on the results of the 2018 residential survey, only 23% of the folks noted that they thought additional bulk plane regulations needed to be established for new infill construction. Only 26 -- or 23% of folks said that. I hope that that statistic reiterates that there is not a strong consensus throughout our community that this topic needs to be addressed every six months or so. In fact, from my view, this regulation should not be discussed further until the completion and adoption of the suggested items based off of the well-sourced and comprehensive NRS report.
And after Catherine is Bob Razell.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Martell, it's M-A-R-T-E-L-L. I'm at 6455 West 31st. I'd like to speak on Items Number One and Number Three. First, on the bulk plane issue, a lot of the points I'd like to make have been made by Rachel and Kim and Nicole. But what I'd really like to reiterate is that I am currently on the Neighborhood Revitalization Steering Committee that was enpaneled by all of you, and we are doing some really good work. And part of that is really getting feedback from our community on what's important and what needs to change, and what we want to see change, and what we want to see stay the same. And I just feel very strongly that having this conversation limited to bulk plane, while this process is taking place, is irresponsible, it's unnecessary, I think it's a, we're not using our time effectively, we're not using our city council resources effectively. And I just would really like to ask you to stand down this issue until this neighborhood revitalization process is complete. You've entrusted us and enpaneled us to do this process, let us do it, and then come back with recommendations. And then let's look at this as a holistic issue, not just bulk plane, but all of the issues that tie to that around charter, auxiliary dwelling units, all of these issues. Let's look at it together and make some meaningful changes that we can put in place in this city and feel good about. Regarding Item Number Three, I am in District One, where we might actually be impacted by an appointment of an elected official. And I just would like to say, I would really like that, like to ask that you look at the candidates who do come forward, and really do try to find somebody that can hit the ground running, ready to be impactful and successful, because there is just a limited amount of time where that person will be in their appointed role, and we would like to not see any ground lost before the next election comes up. Thank you very much.
Well, I spoke to you before on the bulk plane thing, and I think it's a very good idea, and we need to limit the height. Yeah, we're on the west side in the whole city. Wheat Ridge is known for ranches, for large lot ranches where I live on the west side. And why we want to build something 30 feet tall so everybody can look in your yard is a ridiculous kind of idea. That's where our property values come from, is everybody knows what Wheat Ridge is, and everybody wants to live here. That's why I moved here. I originally moved, bought my first house in Lakewood, I wanted to buy it, and we couldn't afford it. So, you know, that's how life is. But that's our reputation, that's what we need to kind of, kind of try and keep. And as far as this committee that's doing all this, whatever it is, sounds like they're all of the same opinion, it must have been chose all by the same person or the same group of people, because they're all talking about ADUs positively, and all this, and da-da-da-da-da. So are we really getting an opinion from these people that's actually reliable or strong, or is just some kind of setup deal? You know, ADUs, if you want to have a duplex, buy a duplex. Don't buy a single-family home and try and make it a duplex. Thank you.
That is everyone who has signed up. Is there anyone who has not spoken who would like to speak on an item on the agenda? Okay, we'll open this up to council. We have a staff review?
I'll be quick. So just a little bit of background, and then I'll turn it over to council for discussion. But as council, I think, is aware, you first adopted bulk plane regulations back in November 16. As has been noted tonight, the bulk plane ordinance as drafted applies in the R-1C Zone District, which is common on the east side of town, but present throughout the city as well. You also adopted the bulk plane regulations to apply in the R-3 Zone District for single-family homes. Adoption of that ordinance, I believe, passed on November 21st, 2016, and it certainly was after quite a bit of discussion with amongst council and with the public. There was, that started in July of 2016, and there were study sessions in July, two in October, and one in November as well. So lots of, lots of discussion at the time. Council has also, as also has been noted tonight, polled its citizens on the topic of bulk plane and the related topic of residential building heights. You did that on two occasions. First, in late 2016, coincident with adoption of the ordinance, there was an online survey that was developed through city staff and with input from city council. It was online for, I think, about three weeks. I'm not going to go over those in detail this evening, though there was some detail, or at least some summary detail, in the council memo that you received last week. And then subsequent to that, in early 2017, as part of our biannual citizen survey, there were also several questions related to residential bulk plane and building heights. And of course, that citizen survey, that biannual survey, is conducted by a national research firm and is statistically valid survey tool. Again, the results of those were summarized in your packet. But we have very quick summary tonight. I think there generally seems to be some support for the concept of broader applicability of the bulk plane requirement, though a high percentage of people, I think, not surprisingly, are either neutral or unsure on the topic, since it's not maybe intuitive to the bulk of the population. So more recently, council members Hoppy and Pond have requested city council consideration whether to apply it more broadly, and potentially to all single-family residential development in the city. We have talked a little bit about this in the past, and I think because the perception was that the infill development that was occurring, that some citizens and some council members had maybe some concern with the scale of that, was largely on the city's east side and in that R-1C Zone District, which is, again, one of our smaller single-family lot zonings. But there was some consideration of broader applicability in those discussions back in 2016. 2016. In the council memo, we've given you kind of three options. They're not numbered, they're just bulleted, but the first one is probably the simplest to administer, and the second two are kind of nuances that would probably require a little, a little additional discussion. And then secondly, we've also asked the question of whether you want to, if you were to apply it more broadly, if you would want to do that also to duplexes. It would not be staff's recommendation that you apply a bulk plane standard to multifamily, just because, you know, by definition, those are bulkier buildings, and there are also residential zoning tools in place that require step backs for multifamily housing when it's adjacent to single families. So we already, I think, have the tools in place that are effectively similar to bulk plane and apply better for multifamily residential structures. And I'm glad to answer questions.
Well, let me start out by addressing some of the concerns that were expressed by our citizens. We understand that the NRS is meeting in general to, to discuss multi-facets of life in Wheat Ridge, and bulk plane or zoning codes is one, one part of that. And we had decided at the last meeting when this was called, that probably we could do two things at one time and do them simultaneously. One of the issues that we're looking at here when we start working on bulk plane tonight is how complicated is the issue going to be? And perhaps maybe more complicated than you may be able to delve into within the scope of your NRS studies, because you're studying so many more different things at once. And it's just a chance to get a, kind of a preview of what can be done, what are some of the pot, the unintended consequences, if there are any, and also to see if there's interest of what's going on. So we know that an active group really wants us to take a look at bulk plane and doesn't want us to wait. We're concerned that if we do wait until after NRS is done, we'll see that final result sometimes in May, and then we try and get this on the agenda, and it could be two years down the road before anything happens, and are not sure that we wish to delay it that long. And we do have issues that are applying west of Wadsworth, where lots are being changed and large, tall houses are being erected. And we have citizens that are here tonight that are objecting to that, and they don't want to wait two years for us to get active. So this is an attempt for council to get proactive and start getting on top of the situation rather than being reactive and trying to play catch-up a year or two from now. So I hope you'll bear with us. No one's trying to ram anything down anybody's throat or get it done before the NRS is, the NRS is done. Hopefully, we can walk and chew gum at the same time as two different groups, and when we get to the end, we'll be ahead of the curve rather than behind.
I asked for support to put this on the agenda again, because when we originally looked at it, and the staff recommendation was to apply it to all of the city, and there was comment made that if it's a good policy, then it should be able to be applied to all of the city. And I did at the time feel like it was a good policy, but didn't know that we had had enough information about how the citizens feel about it. And so that's when we decided to add it to our citizen survey. And in our citizen survey, the official scientific citizen survey, fifty-three percent supported expanding the bulk plane to other parts of the city and sixteen opposed. There are some members of our community who have been fighting this battle for a long time and have asked us to continually continue to look at it. I do think that the NRS is extremely important. I was one of the people who said, please let us look at the NRS and sooner than later. But I also think that the NRS delves, can delve into deeper things, and if there are adjustments or changes that could apply, if the bulk plane gets applied to all zones, then those can be made through, those suggestions can be made through the NRS group meetings, and in the end, we come out with even something cleaner. But I don't feel like we need to wait. It could potentially, I wouldn't say maybe two years, but it could potentially be the end of 2019 before we see some action on what happens after being presented with the NRS results and findings in May of 2019. So I do support this, and I also support it, single-family homes and duplexes. I don't support it going to multifamily.
Thanks for everyone who came out. I, I want to hit a couple of, of points from, from the comments. And I'm just going to start with kind of what I, what I support and what I don't support. And, and I will echo council member Hoppy's recollection that two years ago when this came up, the staff recommendation at the time was to apply bulk plane across the city, and I supported it then. And I, I think we've learned a little bit more, but I'm still on a, I, I don't know that I have changed my position on that. I supported it then for essentially the same reasons I support it now. Before I get into those specifically, let me just say what I don't support. I don't support height restrictions, I don't support architectural restrictions. There's been a lot of conversations that have been swirling around this, and I, I think I've been pretty consistent about my, my feelings about that. I do believe that those things are more nuanced, and, and I do believe that, that those things will, will come out and should be reported back to us as part of the NRS. That is something I do support, which is the effort of that committee and all the work that's going on. And so I, I understand some of the feeling that, that this flies in the face of that. I apologize, there is no intent, and still is no intent, for that to be the case. So I, I support the work. I, I think I've probably used the term holistic a million times up here as it relates to looking at, at the work at the NRS, so I, I'm, I haven't changed my feeling about that. But I will say that I, that I think bulk plane is something different about that. Bulk plane, in my mind, is, is a fair access to the sky. That's it. It, it's not like to the sunset, it's not to the mountains, it's not, you know, it, it's literally geometrically fair access to the sky. And, and it, by the way, does not solve for, you know, being close to some, it does not solve necessarily in all cases for privacy, it does not, you know, it does not do all, all of those things. It literally creates access to the sky for some sunlight and, and, and those things. So I do support fair utilization of existing property rights, you know, I, I don't, I would feel very differently about this if I felt like that this was going to unfairly restrict the rights of, of property owners, either to change and, and develop their own property or to be near someone who's doing that, adjacent to them. I do support the character of Wheat Ridge and, and, you know, and, and some of the things that I think have been said. I, I, again, do not believe that as constructed, this ordinance, applied in R1C or beyond, actually will or is intended to restrict the character of, of Wheat Ridge, the architectural character of Wheat Ridge or, or some of these, some of these things. So there's been some comments about that, probably on both sides, people feeling like bulk plane will restrict the character, and then other people hoping that it would. And, and, and I don't feel like it, it does that. This is not, and this is not a, an ordinance that, that is, that makes, you know, ranch-style homes the only thing you can do. It does not do that. Nor, nor does it codify flat roofs or other roofs or anything, anything else like that. It's, it's very neutral in that, in that manner, which, again, is why I feel like it's one of the very few things that I can at least segregate out of the NRS study and say that I continue to support it as I did a couple of years ago when it was done. That being said, you know, if, you know, if, if there's, if, if there's still work to be done, and perhaps some conversations that occurred on the dais even last week about making sure that perhaps we're not waiting to hear some of the conversations that are going on in the NRS until next May, if, if some of those things are gonna, are gonna come forward so that we understand and can clearly hear from the committee. If the greater committee felt like this was the wrong thing to do, I certainly would, would want to hear that. So I do think if we, even if we move it out of study session tonight, there's a chance to, to hear from the, from the, the committee in general before we, before we finalize this, and I would be welcoming of that, of that information.
So I would be more inclined to support this as opposed to a blanket height restriction all across the city, but I am still very hesitant to apply a one-size-fits-all across all of our city. I understand preserving the character of Wheat Ridge, but I often think about what character it is that we're thinking of. I mean, Wheat Ridge has changed so much since our incorporation. Much of our city used to be agricultural land, and now it's not. We used to have a lot of fields, now we don't. I know, I understand everybody's apprehension about either selling off land or developing certain pieces of property throughout Wheat Ridge. My only concern kind of comes back to that holistic piece as well. We do have an organization that we have created to look at the NRS and to tell us what it is that we should maintain in Wheat Ridge, what it is that we should change, and that they are going out and doing a lot of work and having robust community input with these conversations. And it's, I understand the pressing issue, because if we don't start to address this now, then we may have an encroaching issue that we did not really consider the repercussions of. And I believe that the bulk plane is a great compromise as opposed to a blanket height restriction. So I would like to see a little bit more studies done on this and see how it would apply to further residential zones, but I'm still very hesitant to do just a blanket policy all across the city.
So I appreciate the tenacity of, of this group that comes in, and, and I know you're all affected by it and, and would like some type of resolution with the bulk plane. And I, and I do feel that, you know, we did, you know, look at that and review that in the one district with, with further promises that we would take it out and look at it citywide and in different districts and that type of thing. I, I do think the bulk plane was a happy medium of a way to be able to respect neighbors and home property, sky owners or however George put it, air owners. So, so I do think that's, you know, I, I think we've worked hard and discussed it quite a bit. I, I have to go back to the NRS study, because I will say that I felt a bit scolded last meeting, because I wanted to bring up, can we do a little research on Airbnbs? And it had my hand, this is my opinion, and this is how I felt, not that anyone did it, but I felt like my hand was slapped, because I was trying to do something that our NRS group was doing, and how dare I, you know, set a citizens group or how, you know, we're going to compromise the citizens group again, and we're sending mixed messages and, and those types of things, when I just wanted data. And, and that's a question I'll ask later about my question I asked last week. But I think that it's the same thing. So last week, it was a, a topic that we weren't going to discuss, because we had an NRS study going, and we're not going to go there, because we've got a committee group, and et cetera, et cetera. But now, it's one of those things that's like, well, but in this case, we could probably look at it. So I just think that we need to be consistent one way or the other. I mean, I do appreciate what Mr. Matthews had said, that said, I know we're working on this study, and I know you guys have been very patient, but work with us, and, and I hope along the way that we'll get there as soon as we can. But I, I just question why it might be something that we can move forward, but other parts of the NRS study, you know, it seemed that we didn't want to discuss it, because the group was discussing it. So I guess my feeling is, and I think this is important, and is, we just need to be consistent. So if we're going to say that we're going to wait until this comes back and people have discussed it, could we use, you know, this input? Yes, and, and the good news is, we have people from the study that were here that could hear the input that, that was heard today or discussed today. But I, I just want to be consistent. And if this is something that we're asking these guys to go out and work on, then we consistent and we have that be a part of that study.
I'm going to address a little bit of the 800-pound gorilla in the room right now, too. Wheat Ridge is kind of on the cusp here of being at the crossroads. We're centrally located, but we're a suburb. We're surrounded by large cities, but we're a small city. And part of what I'm hoping to see out of the NRS this year, and I hope they address it, is what do we really see as being Wheat Ridge's niche in the, in the cityscape of a big metropolitan area? And that's kind of been nibbled at around the edges. Let me give you an example here. We have our district R1, okay? And, and our codes define our web, R1 for intent and purpose. This district is established to promote high quality, provide high quality, safe, quiet, and stable, low-density residential neighborhoods, and to prohibit activities of any nature which are incompatible with the low-density residential character. Okay, that's the kind of the traditional rural R1 reputation. We're the farmers, that we've tried to establish ever since we were incorporated. On the other side, we have pressure from people that would have us be like Highlands. And the, the catch-all phrase there is infill. And I've always said since I was elected, beware of the, the phrase infill, because that's synonymous with high density, big houses, build property line to property line. And it is a popular theory with a lot of city planners. We just need to do it. I once had someone tell me about two years ago that I was a dinosaur, that anyone that wanted to work downtown had the right to a short commute. And if we weren't willing to let them build a little house in our backyard so they could have a short commute, then I was just out of touch with reality. So there is the two sides. And maybe we need to find a compromise somehow between those two sides. Bulk plane does, is a part of that puzzle. We also have a unique character in that we market ourselves, if you look at our webpage, as being a rural oasis in the middle of this high-density desert of people that surround us. But yet, we're almost 50% rental, which is, which is consistent with Metro Denver, with a big metropolitan area, not consistent with a rural area. So at some point in time, this city council is going to have to, with hopefully lots of good input from our citizens, decide what path are we going to finally pursue down the road? Are we going to continue to be the Wheat Ridge farmers? Or are we going to be the Wheat Ridge, well, you can go farm at the community garden down the street, you know, we've saved you a plot where you can grow petunias or green beans if you prefer. And that's a lot of what the NRS has to do with us. And we are genuinely looking for assistance from our citizens, because we don't have national polls. I mean, federal political issues, you know, there's someone running a poll that's on the news every night, but we don't have that luxury. So we really are looking forward to and not trying to minimize the NRS. But yet, as leaders in the community, is we have a responsibility to look forward and to identify issues that are going to come up and not sit and be retroactive with them, but to be proactive. As far as the one-size-fits-all, I've heard that mentioned a couple of times tonight, and I agree with you, there is no one-size-fits-all. And it had been my intent that part of what- And it had been my intent that part of what this study session, and maybe some future study sessions would be all about, is to identify how these fit in all of our areas, and which ones does it work, which ones does it maybe not work? And that's what I was talking about earlier, when I said maybe beyond the scope of what the NRS has a chance to delve into, because you're on a more of an esoteric journey as far as, in general, what we're looking for, and not specifics. I don't expect you to come up with zoning codes or to write them. So that's why we have our building division here today, to say, okay, well, we've got 20 different residential zones in our city. Well, how would this work in each of those 20 different zones? And would it really be helpful or not? And I'm hoping that we can start laying some of that groundwork now, so that six months a year from now, we have the study, we have the conclusions, we can start applying solutions before we're too far behind the curve. As a, for instance, in an R1 house, you have, R1 neighborhood, you have to have a minimum of 12,500 square feet. Your property's probably 110, 115 feet wide on the average. Well, how tall a house can you build with bulk plane on an R1 lot? And we have, I have some folks in my district now that are finding out that people want to build 35 feet up, straight up in the air, on an R1 lot, and they're not happy about it in their neighborhoods. One of the things that we were chastised about when we tried to go to the bulk plane is people bought their houses as investments, and they wanted to build these big houses, and we were chopping things out from underneath them. And I want people to know in advance that we may be taking some issues on these bulk planes and other issues, be it Airbnb someday or what have you, and let people know that don't just buy a house in Wheat Ridge for an investment, where you can come out and tear it down and flip it and be gone. It may not work out for you in the long run. We're interested in having folks here that would like to live here for a long time. But at some point in time, we're gonna have to make that decision. Are we gonna lean towards people that we think will be here for 20 years, or for 20 months? And that's a responsibility, I think, that this council has to address sometime in the near future, because times are changing. And we're saddled right now with a high cost of living, a high cost of housing, and I don't know what the simple answer is there. And we're gonna get in continued pressure to address all of these issues in the coming years. So my hope is, right now, that we can start fleshing out some of the mechanics of what does the bulk plane mean to all of our residential areas, instead of just having to say, well, we're not sure, does one-size-fits-all? Because I agree, it probably doesn't. And that's what I would like to see us accomplish as a group, is to get that ball rolling, so that maybe even by the time the NRS comes out, we do have some results here that you folks can study and see what the actual implications are. The road to hell is paved with good intentions and bad legislature, okay? And I'd like to see us avoid that. That's why I would like to see us start now. This is just the first tip of the iceberg that we're gonna start chipping away at. And so my suggestion is that we have to decide tonight, at least, what direction are we going to give the building department in giving us that information of what does one-size-fits-all really mean? And is it duplex? Do we let a duplex, you know, in an R2 lot, go up, straight up and down, or not? Does the people want that? How would bulk plane affect an R2 zone? And of course, an R2 zone requires a minimum of 100-foot-wide lot. And those are the questions I think we need to start addressing, is getting down into the weeds and say, what happens throughout our city? How does it affect us? And what's it gonna make us look like 10 years from now? And if we wanna kick the can down the road, I mean, some of these issues have been kicked down the road from five, eight, 10 years ago, I guess we can. But how dense do we wanna be? How tall do we wanna be? Those are issues that it's time we start addressing. And that's why I wanted to do this tonight. Thank you.
Zach?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. You know, when we established the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, it wasn't my understanding that we just handed them the keys to the city, and then we suspend until they come back with results. I think that we have to take into consideration the citizen survey, we have to take into consideration, when it comes, the information from the committee. But as it relates to this particular issue, this came up prior to us establishing that committee, and even if they are discussing this particular issue, I don't see why that would preclude us from enacting legislation, and then they're more than welcome to come back and provide us feedback on the legislation that we enacted. But I don't wanna set the precedent that just because a particular committee is considering or adjudicating a particular issue, that we are not allowed to discuss it, or act on it, or otherwise move forward with any given issue, because in that case, we really would be hogtied as far as the city's concerned. So as much as I appreciate, and I want to hear back from what the committee has to provide, I think that we need to move forward with this particular issue as it relates to bulk planes, and I would be in favor of enacting a bulk plane on all residential zone districts, excluding multifamily, and I'd be willing to take a consensus on that.
Janice, are you gonna ask for consensus, or?
Zach can ask for the consensus.
Well, okay, I wanna speak beforehand, before we ask for consensus. My house, really, two things. One is, personally, that would affect me. My neighbor and I have houses that were not built parallel to the street. They're at 45 angles, 45-degree angles from the street. And our houses were built before Wheat Ridge was a city, before there was any code. So although we both have large lots, they're walkout lots, and because our houses are skewed, one corner of my house is very close to a corner of my neighbor's house. And because the measurement would be an average measurement of the height, my bulk plane measurement would start at two feet, or something like that. So I, you know, not that I want to do a pop-top, I don't, and I don't think my neighbor does either, although I don't speak for him. But I don't think that this applies to situations that it's not intended for. This was intended for R1C lots that are very narrow, and that has been enacted. So many of the people who spoke, who live in houses that are in R1C, are already taken care of. But those of us in District 3 have large lots, especially walkout lots, as many of us do, we could be adversely affected in unreasonable ways. So that's one thing. The second thing is, I would like to support, again, this overused word, the holistic view of what we're gonna do here. The Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, or NRS, is all about deciding the character of our city, and what we're going to be in the future. And there is a family of issues that are all related to one another, that have to be decided. One of those is the accessory dwelling unit issue, which somebody has alluded to, is somebody out here, I think, alluded to. And that's where there is a possibility that somebody could turn a single-family lot into a duplex, which to me is unacceptable. Then we have the short-term rental issue, the Airbnb issue, which we do need to know more about. But that's a related issue. There's also long-term rentals, and a host of other issues that are all related to the same thing. We need to approach them all at the same time. And I'm not gonna say it's easy, and I'm not gonna say it's not a complicated process, because it is a complicated process. But we need to wait until we have the feedback from the committees that are taking part in the national, in the Neighborhood Revitalization Study. That's what we hired them for, that's what we organize it for. And I do think we need to wait to hear what they have to say. They are, they have committees all over the city, and they are talking to citizens to find out what they believe, what's important to them, and how they view the character of Wheat Ridge. Nobody wants to take away our unique neighborhoods, we all like them. Nobody wants to diminish the quality of life in Wheat Ridge. What we're trying to do is make sure that we have that quality of life in the future, as well as now. So I am not in favor of moving this forward. I would be, I would be okay with delaying this until we have information from the Revitalization Study, and that we take them all at once.
Can I ask just a quick question of staff? And I guess my question is, and it kind of goes back to what Mr. Matthews was saying, is what kind of information is given to the folks in the NRS study, and what kind of information is presented to the citizens? So like, I guess my question would be similar to kind of my whole Airbnb, like, I'm just curious what the data is. Or like Mr. Matthews saying, well, what would this look like on an R2 property? And is this something we'd even wanna consider? And, okay, we've only talked about this in R1, but if we did this in this kind of property, bulk plane, this is what this would look like? And, I mean, are those examples given to the folks in the study, that they're kind of showing people? Because I would say, and I don't even know zoning that well, but I probably know it more than, you know, some, that I wouldn't know what that meant. If you said bulk plane and an R2 property, I might not know the difference of that versus an R1, and be like, oh, yeah, R1, definitely. R2, hmm, not so sure. You know, I guess my thing is, is are we just kind of opening the discussion? Or are we kind of, again, going into the weeds? And I don't know, and I don't know enough to know if that's what the NRS study does, or if that's something that as a council, again, we could be, oops, we could be doing in parallel, or at least pulling that together for when they get that feedback from the citizens. I think that's, I think that's kind of the point that we're thinking of, is let them do that, let them research, let them talk, but are we doing the research to give examples or show examples? What is, when they go out and say we have group meetings, what does that look like?
Yeah, sure. Well, a couple things. Number one, you know, by design, the NRS is very much kind of consultant-driven, hopefully that doesn't sound bad, but it's, you know, purposely not staff-driven. We want these kind of outside folks to be the ones leading the process as neutral parties, right? They've got no skin in the game, except they did this for us, you know, 12 years ago, or 10 years ago. And it's also a very open process, right? So they're being given, the committee members are being given very little substantive information, so that when they go out to the community, it's really an open-ended process of, you tell us what the issues are, right? What has, like, questions like, what has to stay to keep Wheat Ridge the special place that it is? And what has to change to make it a better place? So those are the kind of high-level questions that the committee members are asking themselves, and asking the citizens when they host these small group meetings. The next phase of small group meetings is a little more substantive, and to the extent that there are two kind of actual scenarios that they need to facilitate a discussion of amongst these small group meeting attendees. As it pertains to topics like short-term rentals, the topic of this evening, the bulk plane, EDUs, at this juncture in the process, we're not, you know, we're not giving them any kind of substantive information, or frankly, directing them to get us an answer on that bulk plane citywide thing. If that percolates as an issue in these small group meetings, great. If it doesn't, it doesn't, and the NRS may not speak to this at all. Once we kind of identify the issues through this first phase of the public outreach process, then the consultant and staff get more involved, I think substantively, in terms of giving the committee members, you know, solutions, if you will, and getting input from them on, if that's what your desired outcome, these are some tools that we could use, that we would recommend, might be appropriate to get to that outcome. And that's the next phase of the process. The only data that they've gotten right now, and it's actually, it was quite a bit of data, was their meeting back in September, early September, the committee met, and one of the presentations that they had was a really detailed look at the, kind of, the state of the retail market. That was an optional subtask that staff recommended and council approved. And we've got a really good report from the economic expert, and council, in your November 5th update, will get a similar report on kind of the status of the retail market in Wheat Ridge.
Do you feel like, I mean, I'm not saying we give prescriptive cookbook examples, but do you feel some of that might help? Because I know even as a city council, sometimes you're not aware of the unintended consequences until it goes up, and you're like, oh, wow, we didn't realize that was gonna be so gigantic in this neighborhood, or, you know, those types of things. I just, in round two, do you think some of those examples could benefit? Or is that, I mean, because, I mean, again, you could sit there and say, this is what we want, but then do you say, well, this is what you want, and here's what, you know, here's the pros and cons, or?
One other just data point, the other thing that the committee has been using in these small group meetings is a map, and the city, the city is divided into six kind of logical, at least, subregions. And when they go out to the small groups to get input, that discussion of what needs to stay, and what needs to change, occurs on those different geographic areas. So some of the recommendations, whatever those might be, may have a geographic association with them.
Janice?
So first off, what I would like to say is that in the last survey, one of the questions was in the last 12 months, about how many times, if ever, have you or other household member participated in the following activities in Wheat Ridge? And this is the percent who have participated at least once. And one of the questions was attended a meeting of local city officials and other local public meetings, and it was only 23%. But as I was writing everybody's names down tonight, there are a lot of new names and faces out there, and so I just want to immediately say thank you for coming and engaging in this process. When we were looking at, initially at the bulk plane, it was kind of a hurry-up game, because we were also looking at potential push for a moratorium on all building in the kind of east Wheat Ridge area. And so while we were looking at it, and it came up on August 22nd, is when we approved the emergency ordinance, I sat down and drew out like the diagrams of how it would apply in like the different main zonings, not all of them, but like the main R1s, R2s, R1A Bs, Cs, R3s. And then I felt like it was a good policy, and now I still feel like it's a good policy. And we have had diagrams in the past, not one for every zoning, but I do have those diagrams and those notes. If anybody wants to meet with me, I'd be happy to go over those with you guys from those meetings. But I do, I think that this is a good policy. I appreciate Zach making his consensus. And Kristi, I also wanna say, with the Airbnb, I thought that was getting added to a study session, so if it's not, because, okay.
It is, but it was kind of a...
Okay, well, I thought it was getting added to a study session, so I didn't say anything about it, because I was like, well, we'll see it, you know, later, not have to study it right then and there. But, so anyways, I support Zach's consensus, and when he's ready to ask for it again, I will be raising my hand for it.
Yeah, George?
Just a couple questions, and I think I'll chime in on where I'm at. Can you talk about where, I guess, two pathways here? If we moved it out tonight, what would you do with it? I assume it would go to Planning Commission, and there would be some additional discussions, but if you could be a little bit more specific about that?
Sure, absolutely, it would go to the Planning Commission. Absolutely, it would go to the Planning Commission, and be an amendment to Chapter 26, and those require a recommendation from the Planning Commission. I may not have a complete answer for you, just kind of waiting for the direction from, that we received tonight before we kind of noodle on next steps. But, you know, I think we would probably want to do a little bit more of that technical analysis of how would this apply, as several people have alluded to, several of you all have alluded to tonight. We've not done a lot of analysis as to how it would apply in R1, for instance, other than to say that, you know, it just intuitively, it won't have nearly as much impact as it would in R1C, right? Because the setbacks, the side setbacks, which is where it comes into play most, most often, because those are the smallest setbacks that you have in any zoning district are your side yard setbacks. But in R1, don't quote me directly on this, because I'm not looking at the code, but I'm, I'm pretty sure I know what the setbacks are for the side yard. And it's a seven-foot minimum, as opposed to a five-foot minimum, and then a combined 20-foot minimum. So if you go to seven feet on one side, you've got to be 13 feet on the other side. When we did the math on the R1C, that 13 feet is kind of the number that we thought is the effective setback for that third story, based on kind of some typical elevations for floor-to-ceiling heights, et cetera. So, so the effect on, in R1 will likely be minimal, with one exception, right? And, and the, the exception is really why, at a staff level, we recommended this be applied citywide when the initial discussions occurred. And the exception is for non-conforming structures. You know, much of Wheat Ridge was built prior to the city being incorporated. City incorporated in 1969, initially adopted the county zoning, but then have certainly amended the zoning over the years. But there's certainly a lot of non-conforming structures. And for those non-conforming structures, you know, it might be, it arguably would be appropriate to have the bulk plane requirement maybe impact that. And the, the example I would attempt to describe would be if you had a non-conforming two-story house in our one lot, and it was built at, at five feet at the property line. You know, maybe we don't want to allow someone to pop that with a third floor right at five feet, and that's kind of, in my mind, just intuitively, where the bulk plane would, would kick in for these larger lots that are zoned R1. So we, what that technical analysis looks like, we don't exactly know, but I think we want, we do want to do some of that.
Sure. Well, let me, let me state a little bit of where I'm at, because I truly am in, in the middle of this. Like I said before, and I'll reiterate something that Councilmember Hoppy just said, I, I thought then that this was a, was a, was a good idea, and I still do. Having said that, I was a shamer last week.
Thank you, George.
I know, I know she would not say that directly, although I am owning it. And, and so I, I think my, my, my compromise is to honor Councilmember Davis's request for us to be consistent. However, I, I would ask that, it, it sounds like there's some work to be done on this regardless. How we could continue to do some work, and at least feed that work, if appropriate, feed the work through, through the NRS to, to supplement what, what they're already doing. Perhaps make it, make it study, the Planning Commission, you know, have the Planning Commission study it in more, in a, in, in, in more earnest effort, as opposed to it coming through, so that we are, in some ways, and I'm really splitting the baby here, but we are actually moving this idea, this forward, we're not letting it sit. And, and so I think that may not be exactly what Councilmember Matthews and, you know, is indicating, but I think at least it, it honors some part of that to keep moving, keep moving forward, and to be ready to take action as the NRS comes forward. So if that could happen, I, I would encourage and, and support that. Like I said, I'm not really changing my mind on anything, I still feel frankly like this is good policy. However, I, I don't feel urgent about it, and, and, you know, and I think there was a point, you know, there's, there's a point about, about what we did do in an urgent way, and with, facing a moratorium and all that, and, and I certainly don't feel that way right now. So while I believe this is good, and I'm willing to, to support it, I'm willing to actually step back as I, as, as, as I kind of was, was suggesting last week, that we, we might need to do on some of these things. So to, to that extent, as the, as the consensus comes forward, I will, I will go ahead and, and say, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna not support it, but either in the form of the consensus or perhaps something that comes after that, I would like to advance the work.
So what I hear you saying is, if Zach's request for consensus fails, that you will bring up another request for consensus, is that correct?
If it's necessary, and I mean, we can see how, where we stand at the end of that, and what staff believes they need in, by, by means of, of direction.
Okay. I'm, I'm ready to ask for consensus, but before I do that, I'd like to tell everybody in the audience, I have a zoning map here of the city, and if anybody has not seen this and would like to see this, I will hand this to Jack, and he can pass it around. Would anybody like to see this? Okay, let's have a, let's ask for consensus on Zach's proposal.
All right. I'd like to make a consensus that we apply 26642 to all residential zone districts. I'm trying to think of how to word this. With the consent and recommendations as provided by the Planning Commission. Would duplexes be considered multifamily, or would that be single-family still?
It's a separate class, so there's single-family, two-family, and then everything above that is multifamily. So we, we're not recommending it apply to multifamily, but I, I would recommend that it apply to duplexes.
So apply 26642 to both single-family and duplexes within residential zone districts in the city, and request that the Planning Commission provide us with any recommendations and consent that they require.
And if I could ask a question, is that regardless of zoning, just across the city, if it's a single-family home on a C1 zone lot, or a single-family home on an agricultural zone lot, just across the city?
I, I would say it would be in residential zone districts versus any commercial or industrial zone districts, so.
And we, we do have a fair number of, of single-family homes that are zoned agriculturally as well? So that would be another, I guess, question.
I don't think that, that, that would necessarily apply to them. I think that it would be mainly in those, if it's, if it's zoned...
All residential zone districts.
If it's a residential zone district, the bulk plane would apply, but as it relates to a residential property on an agricultural zoned land, the likelihood is that's a larger lot than you would find in a residential zone district, so I could be wrong, but...
Thank you.
So, that's my consensus.
I count three. So I believe that fails. Is that...
Well, so I guess I would ask, what, what direction, if, if any, is necessary to, to kind of advance this? I think even in the forming of that consensus, there's a couple of questions, like residential versus agriculture, are we talking about single-family and duplexes regardless of zone? So, you know, I would like to suggest, and, and, you know, that we actually do study this, and that it gets studied through the Planning Commission and fed back into the NRS with the intent of it coming back, and us being able to take quick action on this with that information.
Leah, would you like to speak to that consensus?
Well, that wasn't exactly a consensus, but I overall support the expansion of bulk plane throughout some residential areas, but the fact that we have so many questions unanswered, I wouldn't move forward with just a blanket policy. So I'd really like a consensus to direct staff to create a zone, like a residential zoning for bulk plane, as far as like what it would look like in R1C, R3, R2, in like residential areas. Is that, is that something that we can do and still continue to move forward?
So further study, basically, on how this impacts different residential districts?
Yes.
And bring it back to city, bring it back to Planning Commission or City Council? Or both?
Yeah, both.
Start. NRS, NRS.
So first, let's ask for a consensus on George's.
Well, let, am I, am I missing anything? I'd say, I'd say, all right, so I would like to, we, to ask for consensus, direct staff to continue to study this issue, how bulk plane can be applied across the city in, in different zoning districts, and/or in different configurations, like single-family and duplexes, and what the, essentially an analysis of those different configurations. I'd like it to be brought to the Planning Commission. And my request would be, if, if, if it's, makes sense, that it, that it's also offered up to the NRS as part of their work.
We got a timeline on that, or some kind of...
Well, I, I, I'm at least saying that I want it to coincide with the work within the results of the NRS, so I suppose, I don't know what that timeline is exactly, I keep hearing May, so...
Well, maybe, maybe Ken could speak to a little bit on what, what it would take staff to do this further research, and get it on a Planning Commission schedule, and kind of give an idea of how long that's going to take. It may coincide with the NRS process, anyway. If, if he, if it, I'm not sure how much more research it will take.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's kind of a hard thing to get your arms around, right? Because Wheat Ridge has so many different scenarios, right? I mean, there's literally 13,624 of them, or whatever that number is. Not trying to be overly complicated, but it's, it's a good effort, right? I mean, I, I agree with the effort of doing additional analysis and, and research. I don't know exactly what that looks like. The R1C analysis was really easy, because almost all those lots are in east Wheat Ridge. They're almost all 50 feet wide and 125 feet deep, so it was pretty easy to study that in detail. You know, you start getting into the, the central and, and western parts of the city, and there's a lot of different lot configurations and lot sizes. So I think we just have to come up with some kind of typical lots in terms of lot width, and using the setbacks that are already in place, and all those zone districts do a typical lot. So I think that would be our approach. You know, I don't know how much we can do in terms of a lot-by-lot analysis of, you know, to what extent do we have non-conformities outside of, we have lots of non-conformities in east Wheat Ridge as well, just because that's the oldest part of the city, and clearly much of the housing stock was, was built prior to the city's incorporation, but prior to Jefferson County necessarily, you know, actively enforcing zoning codes as well. And that's less so the case, but we, I might want to do a little bit of analysis through, you know, Google Maps kind of thing, of the extent to which we think we have non-conforming structures in other parts of Wheat Ridge. So that would be a little more labor-intensive. So hard to put a, a timeline to it. We're, I'm also going to be filling a staff vacancy in one of my planner positions, so that'll be a little challenging, but we can certainly start hatching a strategy, you know, very soon.
Yeah, I mean, if, unless you're requesting a specific timeline, I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm okay with it being slightly open-ended, and even getting some feedback from staff as you start to dive into it, to let us know how, you know, how long it's going to take, so.
Okay. Okay, that is a pass. With five in favor. Okay, I think that is that. So we're going to move on to the 38th and Johnson Park property issue now. Waiting for Joyce to come to the table, and I think there will be a presentation.
Yeah, Joyce Manwaring will give a brief summary of the issue, and Joyce and Ken and myself will be here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. As you may remember, I was here in May to give you the initial information that the city might have the opportunity to dispose of the park property located on 38th and Johnson Street. When Discovery Park was developed, a portion of the park property at that time was sold to the owner of the Apple Ridge Cafe to improve the site from a circulation standpoint, parking, and traffic in and out of the site off of 38th and Kipling. And briefly, they were using park property to park, because they, the restaurant was a very popular place, and they didn't have enough parking spots. So their parking lot and site was improved, and they purchased a portion of the property. When the master plan was then approved, the council, sitting council at that time was informed that that lot on the corner was not going to be developed at this time, in the, to leave it for a consolidation development with the Apple Ridge Cafe site. So that's how the master plan was approved at that time. So we now have a developer that would like to purchase that property. In May, we discussed it, received consensus from council to move forward with an updated appraisal, which has occurred, and the appraisal price did change. It went higher than the original appraisal when they first asked about purchasing the So that, the parcel is just a little over half an acre, and the appraised price is $650,000. So the charter does, the city charter does require unanimous vote of council to dispose of park property. So we're here this evening to answer your questions, and are you, you're going to address the developer, developer side?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give a brief summary, Joyce, if you're done, before we take questions, but...
I'm sorry, just one, one last point, I forgot. That land was purchased with open space funds, and the proceeds from the sale of the property are required to be placed back into the open space fund, and would be used for park development. Right now, we have Prospect Park next in line for redevelopment. Thanks.
Thanks, Joyce. And as Joyce mentioned, a developer has approached the city, and has primarily been working with the Wheat Ridge Urban and National Authority for the most part, but the developer is working with CVS Pharmacy to locate a CVS pharmacy at that corner, and they would need the excess park parcel to make that development happen. They have entered into an agreement with the Apple Ridge Cafe, and I don't, is there anybody here tonight from Apple Ridge that we're going to come? I don't think so. They have entered into an agreement with Apple Ridge Cafe owner to relocate them to the northwest quadrant of 38th and Kipling, next, close between the Rex Center and the new Shell station that is being constructed as we speak. So they have entered into an agreement to do that, to relocate them and build them a new restaurant. As Joyce mentioned, they're, they're willing to pay the new appraised price of $650,000, and I guess, I guess maybe we'll, we'll just stop there at this point, and take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Yeah, I do have a question. We've got four different parcels outlined here, basically if you exclude CP3. Which parcels specifically are we discussing here?
So the, if you see the parcel labeled A1, the city purchased that from the Apple Ridge Cafe when the master plan was approved. CP3 is right-of-way that the city would like to retain. CP2 is a parcel that we're discussing for disposal of tonight, and CP1 is what Apple Ridge Cafe purchased when, during that transaction in 20...
So CP1 really kind of is an A1, A2, or one parcel, really? Even though it was, it's just a...
CP1 and A2 are now one parcel.
Okay. My question is too, is, and I'm trying to remember now, but up to the north, or the south rather, you know, there's still a lot of undeveloped area there, what happens with that?
Well, that is park property, and that's where the retention pond is located, so it isn't...
Like a temporary parking lot in there?
Oh, there was a time when I did request from planning if I could place a temporary parking lot there when the park first opened. We found that it wasn't needed, and no one was using it, so it hasn't been accessible.
Just the way I left it 20 years ago when I had...
Just the way I left it 20 years ago when I had a construction yard there, what's, what are we going to do with it?
I'm, I'm, could you?
What do we got to do with what, what, I'm sorry?
That parcel between where our, our parking lot is and our green grass and our moat, there's just a kind of a vacant lot that exists there right now, does it not?
The only vacant lot we have is this CP2 parcel on the corner. To the south of there is?
It's improved.
It's not improved.
That's what I'm saying. So it's like a vacant lot. I mean, maybe park property, but what are we going to do with it in the future?
We have no plans for the future.
Is it the retention portion, right now?
Are you discussing, are you asking about the area south of CP2, or CP2 itself?
The area south of CP1 and CP2, between there and where?
That, that is our retention pond and has natural plantings. There's no, that is the plan as you see it today. But the parking lot is located, the temporary lot that was built in 2011 is located on CP2.
Christie's got a question.
Oh, Christie, sorry.
So, first of all, I'm glad to hear that if this gets approved, that Apple Ridge is going to the other side of the street, because I know that's a good place and a beloved place for many people. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that be the case, and that sounds like it's been a positive discussion. I think you just answered my other question, and that's, that's basically, could you see that area? Because knowing that, I was kind of feeling the same way. Knowing that park, it is kind of off to the side there, so it'd be hard to, like, what would we put there in that little section if we've got the retention pond and the overflow? So I guess, I'm, I'm guessing that's a hard parcel, even from a park perspective, to develop into the parkland from how it's currently set up?
That's correct. And when the original park master plan was developed, that corner was hard to integrate into the design of the park, even at that time. So now it's sort of been carved off, and there are no plans for it.
And, and then I guess just one comment that, that is nice to see, and you're definitely, and I'm just going to, this is an urban renewal comment, but I think you can definitely see it on the corner, is with the popularity and the development of sprouts, of what kind of flourishing type of renewal it is creating for the Kipling area, in that the gas station is creating a whole new, larger, nicer gas station, that we've got somebody interested in the corner, and that Apple Ridge would still be there in a nice new building. So it, it's nice to see the kind of but-for of urban renewal that you're seeing developments along, that with the help, with a little bit of a help of, of changing one area, that it's changing all the way down the street. So that's just my other little comment.
George? Just expanding on the fact that the master plan never, never fully considered the corner as part of park programming. Can you, and then I would assume that the actual design then of the park also did not encourage or, or find an appropriate programmatic use, and if that's correct, I guess my, my other question is whether or not the Parks Commission itself has, has studied this, discussed this along those lines since the, since the either construction of the park, or specifically even related to this disposition?
We had a short discussion, but it's on the agenda for their meeting this week on Wednesday night, so a bit of a timing issue, but it's on their agenda for Wednesday.
So, so if we, again, if we move it out tonight, we will, we will hear from, from them before it comes back to us formally?
That's correct.
Yeah, I guess one, maybe, I know we're not talking about exactly the, the, any, any zoning that's going to come through, but obviously, I guess I will just throw out that with all the development, which I think is great, we're really activating that corner, there's a lot of traffic concerns with the, with the interchange, and hopefully, we're continuing to look at that or talk to CDOT and make sure that everything works. I, I know that that's been an ongoing concern.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ponwheat. That's a, a good point to, to bring up to council. Public Works staff is working on interchange improvements for 38th and Kipling to add additional turn lanes in all directions to help with the traffic flow, because like you mentioned, there's been some increased traffic just from some of our developments, but also just from natural traffic growth from population in Wheat Ridge and Kipling especially, and 38th has major corridors, north, south, and east-west. So we do have plans to make improvements to that, that intersection to help with traffic flow, with or without this development.
Larry? Yeah, that was one of my questions. If, if that's sold, I assume that it still will be zoned as a park property, and then a separate rezoning procedure process will have to be implemented? And how will they, if, once they've consolidated the lots, or how's that going to look?
Yeah, so when, when the property was rezoned in conjunction with Joyce's parks master planning process, its own planned commercial, all, the whole property is, and so when we, when we rezoned it, approved the outline development plan, we approved it with this location being designated for commercial use. So we really were anticipating this potentiality here tonight, moving forward, that this parcel could be combined with the Apple Ridge parcel to present a redevelopment opportunity. So a quick answer to your question, no, it does not need to be rezoned.
What's it zoned as right now?
Planned commercial.
Okay. Both the park property?
The park as well.
Okay. Zach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Portem. So with respect to Kipling, what kind of access will this assembled property have coming directly off of Kipling?
At most, right in, right out, and that's not been approved. The typical, Marilyn Cross is the, the director of the access permitting section, and we work with her very actively, just to the extent that we, we've got three or four state highways running through our city. So we have not specifically asked her yet, but given the fact that the parcel, if combined, would have access both from 38th Avenue and from Johnson Street, CDOT very well likely will not allow, may not allow any access from Kipling. You know, the, if you had a right in, right out, it would be right into a, a dedicated turn lane. So you're going to, from a traffic standpoint, you're going to, you know, have people that are tempted to cross as many as three lanes to get over to the left turn lane if they want to go westbound on 38th Avenue. So that's a pretty dangerous traffic safety situation to set people up for that. So at, at most, we would get right in, right out, but we're not confident that we would get that, nor perhaps would want it.
And I, I would tend to agree that a right in, right out, especially in that dedicated turn lane, would not be appropriate, and also given the fact that we've spent quite a bit of money on the Kipling Trail and the bicycles and pedestrians in that area, it just seems like it would be creating a whole other intersection within 50 feet of another intersection. So I would want to avoid that if possible. My next question is related to the reverter clause. Since that's been removed, is the reason that we're requiring these monies go back into open space because the money that was used to purchase this property was open space funds, or what was the benefit of removing the reverter clause if we now had to put this money back in?
Removing the reverter clause gave us more flexibility in 2010. And then also, if the reverter clause were still on the property, oh, the proceeds would be split with Jefferson County based on the bond money and the percentage that they spent to help purchase or acquire that property. So the county is whole in the value because we placed the reverter clause on the bond property.
And then with respect to the 2010 ordinance that allowed for the sale of the park property, is there anything in that ordinance that was specific to certain properties, or just in reading through it briefly, it appeared as though that ordinance approved the sale of this park property already. So why would we be seeking to approve it again, or was this?
It only addressed the, the park property we were selling at the time in the legal description, which is that CP1 parcel.
So CP2 was not included in that at any time?
No, it was just an intended information as regards to the development of the park.
And so what, I, I guess the CP2, that, that just wasn't up for sale, or was that?
We did, they weren't interested in purchasing it at that time, the owner. They just wanted enough to improve their site.
Thank you.
Just to clarify one thing, the, the rebuilding, the movement and rebuilding of Apple Ridge is dependent on the sale, is it not?
Yes, this, this won't proceed forward if, if, if they can't get the, the hardcore. They need both, they need the whole corner and all these parcels to make the, their development work, so.
Anybody else? Larry?
Do we know if they're going to put a single structure there, or is it going to be a, a structure with a strip mall, or do we have any idea what it's going to look like?
I understand it, it'll be a typical one-structure CVS building, similar to maybe what you see at Sheridan and, and 38th. We haven't seen any, they, they haven't gone that far yet, but.
Okay, would somebody like to make a consensus to move this forward? Jase?
Sure, I will. I would like to make a consensus that we move forward with 38th and Johnson Park property sale.
Thanks, Joyce.
Corey?
Thanks, Joyce.
Yeah.
And Ken?
We have one more item, but in accordance with our habit, should we take a 10-minute break?
That's power through.
You want a power through?
Shouldn't take too long.
Was there a comment section about this quarter that I could?
It's at the beginning of the meeting, yes. If this comes back to City Council, there'll, there'll be more comment sections available.
Okay, we're?
There won't be any, there won't be any rezonings, so no, there probably won't be any community meetings required or neighborhood meetings, correct? Ken, correct me if I'm wrong? Nope.
Okay, so we're moving on to appointment of elected officials.
Okay, there, there would be a Planning Commission, also Planning Commission, ma'am.
Ma'am?
There would also be Planning Commission public hearing, there would be a Planning Commission public hearing also, and also City Council, so there'll be, there will be several, there'll be several opportunities for public comment. Nothing scheduled yet, so keep an eye out on the future agendas and.
Okay, so we're talking about appointment of elected officials, and this arises because we have the possibility of two vacancies coming, so would somebody, would you like to give us a report on that?
Yeah, I can give you a brief, brief update. Councilmember Marjorie Duran, or, no, let's see, who asked to put this on? Somebody asked to put this on. Councilmembers Hoppy and Fitzgerald asked to put this on the agenda because of the, like, potential of a couple elected officials moving on to different elected seats in the state. And that's, it's one City Council seat in District One and our city treasurer. The Wheat Ridge City Charter dictates the process for filling vacancies, and I outlined that in your, your memo. But for a council member, the City Council must, within 30 days after a vacancy, choose by majority vote, somebody to, to fill that position. With other elected officials, the city treasurer, city clerk, there is no timeframe of when City Council must reappoint that person, so you have a little more flexibility there. The only really other city charter restriction or requirement is the qualifications for those who you can fill these positions with, and they, they must be a registered elector, resident of the district from which they would be appointed for, for at least 12 consecutive months, presiding that, that appointment. And the city treasurer has the same qualifications as a member of City Council. City Charger, City Charter, Wheat Ridge Code of Laws or Council Rules and Procedures do not address specific procedures on how these appointments could happen. I outlined a, a brief recommendation on, on one way you could move forward, and this was similar to the, to the last process, I believe we used to appoint a, a position in District One. You know, I'd recommend that to be as transparent and open as possible, you'd advertise the vacancies widely throughout the community, accept applications from interested residents, and conduct some type of interview, or allow for presentations of those applications, and then choose by majority vote in a public meeting the candidate that you would like to fill those vacancies. So we won't know, obviously, until November 6th, so I don't know when those positions, the city charter also says there's not a vacancy until there's a resignation, so I believe a state legislature position is not sworn in until January. So depending on when, when and if Monica Duran, if she does win that seat, when she resigns, that's when the 30 days will start ticking. And the same with, with, I think, I believe with the county treasurer, I believe they're not sworn in until January also, so.
So if it requires a resignation, would that mean that they could potentially hold both positions without, that they could, they could hold both positions legally?
I believe our city attorney says that, yes, they can.
That's interesting.
You're going to run for office?
One's enough.
I, I, the one thing that I think that we're really lacking in this process is, is an application specifically for this. The application that I filled out when, when I was going through this process, I think was for boards and commissions. And so I think that we probably could have a much better application for people to fill out. I mean, it, it offers like a, a half of a line and one line when you write, "Why do you think you would be good at this?" You know, like, it, it, yeah, "Why do you think you'd be good at this in 15 or less words?" And so, so I think that's really important. As far as the recommendations go, advertising it, accepting the applications, and then I, I think that having opportunity during study session, and then like a specific designated study session for them to have opportunity to come to the podium and give us this bill is good. Of course, if, if they apply for that before and they want to come during citizen comment, a regular business meeting to get extra face time, they could, and then choose by majority of vote. I, I like all of those. I just really think we need a better application.
So a couple comments. The idea that Ms. Dozeman just brought up is interesting, that they're going to have to resign. So I think that brings up one issue, if the intention is to resign or not, which, I, I don't know. I mean, one would hope that holding both positions would not be ideal for the, you know, for, for those folks, but I can't speak for them. So I think that's, that's one thing that's, wow, I, again, I think time to look at our charter. And I think the other thing, the other thing I just wanted to bring up, thinking outside the box, which also brings up charters, and this has nothing to do with the position or the people in the position. But I, I think, you know, the council member and it being filled within 30 days, you know, makes sense. We vote on the dais. They need to be represented. But I'm just wondering, considering, you know, But I'm just wondering, considering, you know, a comment was made earlier today that it's only 10 months, that this, that it's not, that we're not going up for an election again. You know, is it something that, and I would have to, we'd have to check with legal or whatever it might be, but, you know, for city treasurer, there's very few cities that have elected city treasurers. So, is that something that, if Mr. DeTulio does resign, that that's a position we leave vacant for 10 months? Of course, with him, you know, I mean, leaving, just like you would in any transition plan when you leave a position of, hey, this is where this is and this needs to be reviewed. I mean, we do have staff that does some of that as well, but I'm just thinking outside the box, you know, from a, you know, how can you get somebody up and running in such a short amount of time? Could it be something to consider that we try to do that within staff, actual staff versus having someone try to fill that position for 10 months? I mean, in the non-political world, it happens quite a bit, yes. Because we do have staff that perform a lot of that role, so.
I think I read on here that we could leave that open until an election. Did I not read that correctly?
Well, at least we don't have to have the 30 days.
Yeah, but you mentioned the charter, so if we wanna do a charter amendment, we would have to get that-
We don't have to do that now, but I think in the long run, the fact that if someone's holding a state or county position, that they shouldn't be able to hold this position, that's one thing that needs to be clarified. And then, I mean, I'm just saying in general, that, I mean, I would think the position of treasurer, if well-transitioned, could probably, hopefully, and I'd have to ask staff of that, if that's something that could be managed for 10 months, rather than trying to get somebody up to speed that could be gone within months. And it could be visibly responsible.
And both councilmember Duran and city treasurer DeTulio, their terms are up on, in 2019. So, I think, Janice, you were asking, you saw something in here. It's a little bit different on an elected official versus a city council person. City council appoints the city council person until the next election. They appoint an elected official, city treasurer or city clerk, until the term is up for that person. So, in this case, it's the same because their terms are both up 2019. But let's say Jerry's term wasn't up until 2021, you would appoint somebody until 2021, not the next election. But in this case, it's the same.
The same would apply, though, if we wanted to make a change and make it against code to hold two offices at once, but.
I mean, I think that's one act of discretion.
Larry? Yeah, I understand where you're going with that. And I would just kinda remind us, too, that Colorado is one of the few states that actually considers their state legislators to be part-timers. It's not considered a full-time position. And obviously, a lot of these guys still run businesses and do whatever they have to do at the same time. I would suggest that we perhaps get an opinion, though, on, I think I know which way they're probably both gonna go as they're gonna resign their positions. But I think if we got maybe a letter of intent, and so that we're not putting the cart before the horse, and then if they say we have a letter of intent that we're going to resign and within 60 days or something, what's concerning me is I don't wanna wait until they actually resign, because now all of a sudden, we could be down to two weeks or three weeks without a special, of deliberation time, without a special meeting. So, if we could get a letter of intent, yes, we will be resigning our positions and we will, so that they can still be active for us while we're searching. It's kinda like giving two weeks' notice. If you're gonna leave a job, you can try and let your boss find, have a little time to find someone to replace you. So, we can start taking applications, and then that would give us more time to, A, publicize or, you know, publish the vacancies so that people would have a chance to respond to it, and we wouldn't end up with having to make some decision in two weeks rather than 30 days. That's the part that concerns me, is that if they are good enough to tell us they're gonna resign no later than a certain date, then we can start advertising for those positions and that they can still handle their duties. The treasurer can sign the stuff he's gotta sign, and we don't have to jump through whatever hoops. I don't know who signs his stuff in his absence, but we can still at least carry out a minimum of business that way until they actually do resign, and then we've got our ducks huddled and we can, and replace them as required.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I guess I just didn't realize that the city hall was rezoned as industrial employment, because that's the only area where we allow psychic advisors to operate. But, you know, in my mind, it doesn't make sense that we go through this exercise without any clear, concrete idea of who's leaving and when they're leaving and when they're resigning. I wouldn't suggest any elected official worth their salt that would hold two offices at the same time. I would expect any elected official in the city to resign their office should they be elected to another one, holding two at the same time. I don't, I just can't imagine that. So, that being said, I think that the application process could be beefed up, but I also don't wanna create too much of a hurdle, because obviously, none of us filled out that application except for Janice. But there isn't an application, there isn't a general application process as it stands, and so I would appreciate more information than less as it relates to the appointment of a potential replacement. But until those elected officials resign, I wouldn't wanna discuss this any further.
I do think we should, I think we have time to improve the application, and we should. And I agree, there's no point in doing anything until, that's the readiness, I think, is getting the application done. And the consensus that we should come to tonight is that we are going to advertise widely throughout the community, much like we did before, and that we're going to see applicants in the study session or something like that. We can get more specific as it comes.
Yeah.
How long would you say is the process from start to finish, from, like, publicizing the vacancy to appointment?
Well, you have 30 days by charter to appoint somebody, but I don't know if that forbids you from starting a process. And, I mean, the charter is pretty specific. There's, a vacancy does not come about until somebody resigns or one of these other means of resigning, moving out of the district or moving out of the city. So, you know, if council gave us direction to start a process, you know, on November 6th or November 7th, when we know if they win or not, again, you could push it as quickly as possible. And again, it depends on when they just choose to resign. If they choose to resign on November 7th, we're gonna have to do it in 30 days. But if they wait to resign on January, whatever, we have a little bit of time. But, you know, we could streamline it and get it done in 30 days. It'd just have to be a quicker process, or we could take our time and do it in two months.
Janice?
So, I think kind of what some of the issue was, the last time this situation came up was that there was not a process in place and that it was unclear on which way it should go, and it caused some strife. And so, I think that it's important, just tiny bit, that I think we should have a process, because when in doubt, follow the process. And so, if the process is, you know, A, there has to be a vacancy, whether that means someone moves, someone decides, you know, they have a family member they have to take care of so they can't do it anymore, or whatever it is, they get elected into another position. A, you have to have a vacancy. B, you have to accept applications, and we should have a better application. And then, you know, C, they should have one, at least one opportunity to speak to city council and the public, whether that is in the beginning of a city council meeting, regular work, or during a study session. And then, at that point, we, you know, then at that point, a motion is made and it's, you know, filled by a majority vote. I think that is the process that we should be discussing tonight, is, and then the rest of it, we could probably discuss at a later date, unless, my only other question is, if it's something where we want to say that we, that to be a city councillor, you cannot hold another elected official position, but that's hard, because what if you're elected onto the fireboard?
I mean, I think that's a different time.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's a different time, and if we look at, looking at our charters, I think that we could probably be a little bit more-
Clear.
Clear.
Okay. Well, then I would, with that, I would like to ask for a consensus to start to outline our process if a vacancy happens in an elected official's city council or treasurer or a city clerk position, as in the steps that are here under the recommendations, including an updated application.
Okay. You see us, I have an analyst. Okay, that is our process, so I guess we need to, elected official reports. First of all, it's certain to know.
Okay, ballots are started to mail today, so you can start to look for your ballot in the mail. And I don't think Wheat Ridge has ever mailed on the first day, so it'll be a couple of days. And then, I wanted to remind everybody of the boards and commissions dinner tomorrow, and-
Is it tomorrow or Thursday?
It's tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, tomorrow's Tuesday, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
And the last thing is, councilmembers have something for you over there after the meeting. It's the thing that we're handing out at the dinner, but we wanted to, there's a lot of them, so anything that we can hand out ahead of time is helpful, so don't leave without your bag.
Yes, I am thankful to be a part of the Jefferson County Community That Cares Key Leadership Committee. And while the key leadership committee doesn't meet a whole lot, there's a lot of other working groups. And one of the things that we did in this last week, we had two meetings, but one of them was doing resource identification. So, basically, the Jefferson County Communities That Care are looking at ways to prevent youth in risk-taking behaviors, that's alcohol, binge drinking, marijuana, that is dating and sexual violence. And so, we're working on that, and these are, this is funded through some of the marijuana monies. And so, because if you'll remember, a portion of that had to go towards education. So, this is a structured evidence-based community change process, and I'm really happy that we're working on it, and I'll bring you guys back some more updates on that in the future.
Zach?
Larry? As Murphy would have it, I do have a conflict tomorrow night, so I will attend the awards banquet, and I look forward to being there. I do want everyone to know that when you see me leave early, it's not a comment on either the proceedings or the food. I just can't be in two places at once, but Carol will fill me in. She'll stay the course and fill me in on what's going on. I do think it's a really worthwhile endeavor, and I really wish I could be there for the whole shebang. Thank you.
I think, thank you.
George?
Yeah? Yeah. I have nothing. I was going to talk about the boards and commission dinner, but if you would look at the latest connections, the mayor has a column in there about a meet-the-candidate night, which I think is tomorrow night also, for those who would like to meet all of the candidates. So, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
What time is that dinner tomorrow? I have it in my-